To call this meeting to order, will you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Can we please start with a roll call?
Council President Prince.
Here.
Councilmember McIrvin.
Here.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera. Councilmember Alwerson.
Here.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Here.
And Councilmember Perez.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, one absent.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President.
I move we excuse the absent council member.
It's been moved by Council President and seconded by Councilmember Alwerson that we excuse the absent council members. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Alright, motion carries. Next up is the administrative report.
Alright, good evening, everyone, welcome back. The Renton History Museum is hosting a pilot project for America's 250th anniversary titled, "Tempests in Teapots: Of Special Interest to Educators." Join presenter Barbara McMichael at the Renton History Museum Thursday, September 19th at 4:00 PM for the Tempests in Teapots, an interactive history presentation with tea tasting that will shed light on how a simple beverage raised tempers enough to brew the Boston Tea Party and the American Revolution. The event is free, but pre-registration is required. Go to Eventbrite.com and search for Tempests in Teapots, or visit rentonwa.gov/rentonhistorymuseum. Information about preventative street maintenance, traffic impact projects, and road closures happening this week can be found at rentonwa.gov/traffic. All projects are weather permitting, unless otherwise noted, streets will always remain open.
Alright, thank you. Next up is audience comment. We do have another people have signed up to speak tonight, and I would like to remind everyone that all remarks must be addressed to the entire council as a whole. If a response is requested, please provide your name, address, including email address to the city clerk and allow follow-up. Speakers must sign up prior to council meetings. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes. When recognized, please state your name, city of address, and what you'll be stating. Please step up to the podium there. You'll see that there's an actual light that will tell you when it's, when the little light turns to yellow, please start wrapping up your comments. So first up tonight is Tim Lambro. Tim Lambro is not here. Alright, we're gonna jump on to Angela Lulane. Lulane.
Hi, thank you for listening to my comments this evening. My name is Angela Lulane. I'm at 314 Garden Avenue North in Renton. I'm here to speak about the Renton High School expansion that has been going on. There's a number of people in the audience. I don't know if anybody wants to raise their hand who's here regarding that issue. So we have a few. We've spoken to the Renton School Board already. I've been there twice and they don't respond. I haven't heard any response back on my concerns. There was a bond that was passed in 2022 for rebuilding the high school, which everyone thought was a wonderful idea, but they said they were going to find a different location. But then, within even half a year, they said like that they couldn't find a location, so they decided to expand, and they're taking homes next to the high school using eminent domain. And on their website, you'll see that they're saying that they're negotiating with neighbors and finding a good price or whatever, but really they're telling neighbors that they have to move, and it's eminent domain, and some neighbors that have sold even are getting a break on taxes because it's eminent domain. So it's very frustrating that they're trying to say, well, we're not really using eminent domain, but they are. But regardless, we understand that the high school, rebuilding the high school is a good thing, but to just force these neighbors out of their homes is very, it's just very terrible. I have a friend who has had a lot of hardship in her life, real major hardship, and she rebuilt her life, she lives there, she put all of her, you know, soul into her home and her kids, and now she's gonna be kicked out of her house and have to like rebuild her whole life again. And I've met an elderly couple, doesn't know how they're gonna be able to afford somewhere else. I've met a family that sold and they couldn't find a place in Renton because it's too expensive, so they're moving to Kent. There's a disabled woman, there's a man who rebuilt a house for his daughters, and that's just gonna be wiped out. And what is really frustrating is that the school district won't even talk to us about it. There, if they, according to the RCW, if the bond is, money is spent any different way than how it's proposed to the voters, they're supposed to hold a public hearing and talk to the voters about it, and they haven't done that. So they could at least explore options. The area between the high school from Tobin to Airport Way is gonna just be baseball fields. And I mean, other inner-city schools like, I forget the name, in Seattle, that they have, they don't have fields, they practice elsewhere. There are alternatives, the city could help with alternatives, but it's very frustrating that these people are gonna lose their homes. There's also businesses there, I don't know why people should move here. There's the Dreamliner building, they're gonna have apartments and stuff. They're still in the process, they had their, their public hearing, the city's like, yeah, 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 go, go! And then there's this beautiful restaurant, it's all gonna be wiped out, so I don't know why businesses should come here if all their plans are gonna be like destroyed. I'm just like asking for your help and to look at this and not let Renton District just use eminent domain and just wipe out all these homes. So, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, next up is Sarah Becker.
Good evening, council and mayor, my name is Sarah Becker. I live in, currently we live in the South Renton neighborhood. I'm here to address the proposed Renton High School expansion plan also. This proposed expansion would eliminate 32 single-family homes and 12 businesses in order to put in a ball field and some parking for Renton High School that would only be used a few months out of the year. I find it appalling that this is even a consideration when we are currently experiencing affordable housing crisis. These homes are not only affordable for their owners and renters, and this is an established community, it's within walking distance to parks, stores, and Renton High School itself. Students living in the area are able to walk to school and not have to rely on a bus system or a car. This aligns with the city of Renton's plan to maintain a walkable downtown core. Plus, these homes already have infrastructure in place, providing electricity, water, and sewer services. It would be a waste to remove all this infrastructure in order to put in a ball field. Not only does the school board expansion proposal displace families and reduce housing, it would eliminate 12 businesses, which add tax dollars and jobs to the Renton economy. Something else to consider is the already-approved six-story mixed-use building on Airport and Logan that will provide space for two businesses and 30 apartment units. This already-approved project sits on the same property that the Renton School District is attempting to purchase through eminent domain. If the city allows the school board to purchase this property away from the already-proposed mixed-use development, though, development, there will be even more housing opportunities lost. It's hard for me to believe that it is even considered to be a viable option to tear down 32 affordable single-family homes, eliminate 12 businesses, and retract the approved mixed-use structure, which will create much-needed housing. Renton High School does deserve to be upgraded to allow state-of-the-art educational opportunities. This can be accomplished through the current demolition and rebuild plan without the land grab north of the school. I encourage each of you to take the time to drive and walk through the neighborhood that the school board is proposing to tear down. Speak to the neighbors and see the community. Then try to tell me that it is within Renton's vision to displace these families and businesses and their established infrastructure. I request the city council does the right thing in this situation. Approve the Renton High School remodel, but deny the proposed expansion that would displace the families and reduce housing and jobs. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Next up is Catherine Lu Smith.
Hello, my name is Catherine Lu Smith. I haven't been here in a long time, and I know some of you. I am a longtime Renton resident, I've been here almost 28 years, and I am one of the homes affected by this project. Essentially, a home that we built and expanded and a garden that we built and where I raised my children, and I am threatened to lose my home in very difficult economic times. So several of my neighbors and myself have attended the school board meetings. We are appealing to the school board for a stay on this project, not to cancel it. I have been a huge supporter of education in Renton. I was involved in PTA for many years. I wasn't born in the US, so never went to school here. And when I had my kids, I had to learn everything about this country, the school system, how things work. And to do that, I started volunteering and then got engaged more through PTA. I was also for 10 years a library board trustee in Renton, three years with the city of Renton, 10 years with KCLS. That was a very interesting time, but I spent a lot of time here in this building, in this room and adjacent rooms. So I appeal to you for your help and for different reasons. Jurisdiction is school district, clearly, but there are other implications. I won't repeat what my neighbor here said, but the city, our street is supposed to disappear. For 20-plus years, I was told that we were in essential backup to Airport Way, and while this hasn't, you know, suddenly the street is taken over by project, our homes are taken over. It's a pretty horrible situation, so we'd like to have a meeting and understand what we can do. And another thing I learned that I'd like to bring to attention of the people of Renton and the council here is that the school district acquired a building downtown Renton for nearly $8 million to relocate the food preparation services. Now, food preparation services can be done anywhere. Why acquire primarily state property in a downtown core that you are all working so hard to redevelop and enhance for the benefit of everyone in the community? This is very concerning, and you know, it seems that there is no primary reason right now in a lot of things that are being done. So again, I support the project, but I want to appeal to all of you for help in at least having some discussion and see what we can do to push back, to save our homes, but also to help the school get what it needs for the students. And that's all I wanted to share tonight, but I'd love to have further conversations with some of you. Thank you very much. Oh, and I did introduce myself, Catherine Lu Smith, and I live on South Tobin Street. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. So before we move on to the next speaker, I just wanna say I appreciate all of you coming to speak to us about this issue. This is clearly a school district issue, and we have, we do work closely with the school district. You know, they, they worked closely with us when they were originally looking at other sites, and they did an exhaustive search for other locations. And as many of you that are frustrated with expansion in that current location, they were hearing from folks that were very upset with them possibly moving it. So trying to, trying to please everybody in this situation's been very difficult. So I know that the school board has reasons for why they do what they've done. They are a separate entity from the city and they have jurisdiction over this. So I would encourage you to still continue to work with the school board on this issue. So alright, next up is Bob Baker.
Thank you very much for having me. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I am here today to express my strong support to the city of Renton to acquire the Lakeside Industries' proposed asphalt plant, which is located at 1-8825 Southeast Renton Maple Valley Road. This strategic move would capitalize on the crucial opportunity to safeguard our community water supply and to protect the environment's integrity to our city. This chosen site for the asphalt plant is located at the top of the Cedar Valley Aquifer, which provides drinking water for the city of Renton. Consultants to the Lakeside Industries have stated in full that they plan on treating industrial runoff by injecting it into the ground for runoff. This runoff will contain a number of things, including tar, gas, oil, and many terrible, terrible things. As an example, the city of Seattle purchased 91,000 acres of the Chester Morse Lake watershed to protect their water supply. And the city of Irvine, California is set to spend $360 million to close down a single asphalt plant to improve their air quality. By contrast, this property is, right now, is valued at approximately $12 million with an assessed value of $9.3 million. If we wait and they do move in, the cost will exceed $15 to $30 million. Acquiring this riverfront side would additionally offer the opportunity for the city to explore alternative uses that could benefit the community economically and socially, whether you put in a park, educational opportunities, renewable energy projects, or other environmental-friendly initiatives. The city council has a chance to demonstrate leadership and promoting sustainable developmental practices. We urge the city of Renton Council to move forward with diligence and determination in pursuing the acquisition of this Lakeside Industries' proposed plant by using eminent domain if necessary. By doing so, you will not only protect our water supply, but to uphold the values of environmental stewardship and community well-being that define our city. Thank you for considering my proposition, and we look forward to seeing Renton continue to thrive as a model to responsible urban development. I have included a packet to each one of you. Inside that packet is what I just said, as well as the Water District 90s strong opposition to this landfill, or excuse me, to this, to this proposed asphalt site. Also, on the back page, you will also see the Fire Marshal's opposition to this and what it would cost not only the city but his firemen. If you have any questions regarding this, you can contact me, or you can look at the King County.
I need you to wrap it up, Bob.
Yeah, King County 90s water shed wellhead, and it will tell you also in there that this is a bad, bad situation for your water supply.
Alright, thank you. Alright, next up is Mary Kleimer.
Hello, Mary Kleimer, city of Renton, Talbot Hill neighborhood. So over the last decade, I have had the privilege to come here and speak with you about public art in our community. As a proud member of the Renton Municipal Arts Commission, and it's a role that I took a lot of pride in. It is a role that I stepped away from in March of this year after countless incidences of bullying, harassment, and poor conduct from a fellow commissioner. These incidences were not directed at me. Well, not at first. The more I chose to speak up to this individual, I was made to feel like I was the problem. After this individual verbally attacked another commissioner, HR got involved. And even, and we were able to enlist Benita Horn to help the commission identify a code of conduct. And these were meetings that this individual did not feel he needed to attend. The city was well aware of these ongoing problems and this individual, but opted to do nothing. The neglect had resulted in me and many before me choosing to walk away. It has recently come out that this individual is a registered sex offender of the third degree. Now, the Arts Commission is out amongst the public. They're around children and around some of our most vulnerable citizens. And this feels like a major oversight from the city and one that I hope you're willing to address and take responsibility for. Now, this person and this situation is no longer a problem. So moving forward, I'm here today to ask you to please start conducting background checks before somebody is appointed to a board or a commission within the city to prevent good, caring, and hard-working volunteers from walking away. Thank you.
Alright, next up is John Fisher. Oh, well, welcome. Alright, then we will skip over Diane Dobson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Diane Dobson, North Renton neighbor, but I'm here on behalf of the Renton Chamber of Commerce to address the ongoing issue with the abandoned property at the corner of North Sixth Street and Park Avenue North that I personally, as well as residents from this neighborhood, have been here a number of times over the past few months on. This property has become a major concern for the surrounding neighborhood and for the local businesses that are seeing their operations disrupted by the increase of criminal activity and foot traffic around the site. As you may or may not be aware, the Renton Regional Fire Authority has determined it unsafe to enter the property due to the risk it poses to firefighters and are at a containment-only approach. The developer out of California who owns the property signed a liability contract accepting responsibility in the event of a fire with the condition that they maintain a 24/7 fire watch. However, to date, no fire watch has been implemented, and the developer has actually stated they unilaterally chose not to uphold this requirement due to the costs involved. The businesses in the surrounding area have been deeply impacted by this negligence. Customers and employees are reporting increased incidents of crime, vandalism, and unsafe conditions. This directly affects their ability to operate and serve our community, and as the chamber, it's our responsibility to advocate on their behalf. You may remember a few months ago when neighbors were making public comment, there was actually a fire response to that building at the exact same time. We understand the developer is awaiting a SEPA review to issue demolition permits, but this should not delay enforcement of critical safety measures. We ask that the Renton Fire Authority's enforcement, city code enforcement, and the SEPA review process not be mutually exclusive, ensuring the developer is held to the same standards that our business community adheres to. This is not a matter of public, not only a matter of public safety for the surrounding neighbors, but one of economic impact on our local businesses. On a separate note, relevant with the individuals that have come here tonight, and I have a community hat on, not my chamber hat, I'll differentiate. A few weeks ago, the council referred the matter of the John Huston eminent domain to administration for research on, and it, there was, there were comments that it's not necessarily under the jurisdiction of the city. But what could be of purview would be to establish an ordinance more restrictive than the state's rules on eminent domain, which could require transfer documents to contain protective language for any property that's transferred under the action or threat of eminent domain, that if the property is not utilized for the public use that it was required for, the original stakeholder has the first right of refusal to purchase the property back with the same formula used to determine the fair market purchase price the property was originally acquired for. And Mr. Mayor, I respect, while the current approach to the Renton School District is definitely under the school district jurisdiction, there are collaborative approaches the city could lead the charge on, similar to the Maple Valley and Tohoma School District, with their collaborative ball fields at Summit Park. Thank you for your time. I know you guys are faced with extraordinary circumstances, and I appreciate the time.
Alright, thank you. And we're at Heidi Daniel?
Oh, good evening. My name is Heidi Daniel, and I'm the new executive director of the King County Library System. So I wanted to take a moment to come in person to introduce myself to mayor and to the city council of Renton, as we have two of our beautiful branches, our community libraries here in the city of Renton. I moved here, I started in March, I moved here from Baltimore, Maryland with my family, and we are just thrilled to be here in the Pacific Northwest. And in Baltimore, I led their 22 library, branch library system, which is also the state library for the state of Maryland. So I'm coming here with that experience. And I've had the opportunity now to visit all 50 of King County Library Systems' locations since March. And I can say Renton has the only library that's over a river with Salmon Running, so that's pretty exciting. It's also the only library system, I've ran with a library that's over a river with Salmon, so it's great all the way around. And I just wanted to take the moment to thank the city for its support, to thank the community for all the ways in which it utilizes its library system, and we look forward to continuing to be great partners with the community and city of Renton. And I also have Brian Candelory with me, who also signed up to speak, but he is going to just briefly give you an update on Renton and Renton Highlands activities and summer reading, as he's our regional manager for Renton and Renton Highlands.
Hi. Sorry. Hi, everyone, nice to see some of you again. Greetings, I'm sure, from Angie Benedetti. I got a very nice card from all of you, so I'm sure it sticks in your mind. So thank you for that, it's on the desk at that beautiful library Heidi just mentioned. So we've been doing a lot of cool things at the two libraries in Renton. We have, as many of you may know, at Boon Buna down the street, we have Hark Integrenia Storytimes, recently, which have gotten up to about 80 people, which is really cool. We recently had a Pride and Joy Book Fair over towards, I forget what that, that trail's called, but I like to walk it sometimes on my lunch at the community center. We had about 180 folks from the community show up to that, which is really cool. And we have weekly storytimes, which also are between 20 and 80 folks, and we're starting to roll out weekly bilingual Spanish/English storytimes. So if you know of anyone who might be interested, please tell them to look on our website. And very cool, I hope everyone's excited about this. We have weekly bilingual Korean/English storytimes, starting at the Highlands Library. So again, if you know anyone who's interested, please let us know. And lastly, we have a resource fair pretty much monthly at the library down the street on the river. We've had about 100 folks come. We've also had a lot of patrons come up and thank us for doing that. But thank you all for the support that you're providing through some of the social services we're working with to partner, so we appreciate that. That's all I've got, so thank you for all your support. Yeah, I live in, I don't live in Renton, but I live in Seattle, but I really love coming down here. So I think I was supposed to give you my address.
Nope, that's fine.
You don't want my address?
No, just city of residence is fine.
Okay, okay, alright, well, thank you very much.
Alright, thank you. Alright, we got to the end of the list. I'm gonna circle back to the very first name, Tim Lambro, did Tim show up? Okay. Alright. Yes. Bob Baker, oh, Bob already spoke. Yeah, yep. Alright. Well, thank you. Well, thank you all for coming and sharing with the council. Appreciate you guys taking the time out of your night to, to come down and, and speak to us all. So we're going to keep on with the rest of the city business now. Next up is the consent agenda. There are nine items for council consideration. Are there any, like, or separate discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, council president.
Seeing none, I move we adopt the consent agenda as published.
Okay, it's been moved by Council President Prince, seconded by Councilmember Alberton, that the council adopt the consent agenda as published. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. All right, motion carries. And we are on to unfinished business. Council President Prince?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McGurven?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Finance Committee has four committee reports this evening.
Finance Committee, committee report, first is regarding payroll, payroll claims and payroll vouchers. The Finance Committee approves the following payments, council payable total payment of seventeen million, four hundred and forty-two thousand, two hundred and two dollars and thirty-five cents for a number of vouchers and payroll benefit withholding vouchers and two wire transfers. Two is payroll, a total payment of four million, three hundred and three thousand, six hundred and eighty-two dollars and ninety-eight cents for payroll vouchers that include one thousand, six hundred and twenty direct deposits and seven checks. This is the July sixteenth through thirty-first and August first through August fifteenth pay periods. Third is Kidder Matthews vouchers totaling nineteen thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and forty-five cents. And municipal court vouchers totaling twenty thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars and seventy-one cents. This is signed by the committee chair and vice chair.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember O'Halloran?
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second?
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries.
Hey, the next report is regarding a public assistance grant. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the state, the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the Washington State Military Department Public Assistance Grant, number D twenty-four dash three six six. This too is signed by the committee chair and vice chair.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember O'Halloran?
I move the, I move the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second?
Okay, it's moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries.
The next report is regarding an agreement with Bruce Dees and Associates for the Cleveland Richardson Park Master Plan. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute a professional services agreement with Bruce Dees and Associates in the amount of two hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars for master planning and design services for the Cleveland Richardson Park Master Plan project. This is also signed by the committee chair and vice chair.
Mr. Mayor?
O'Halloran?
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second?
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur the Finance Committee report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries.
The final report, or yeah, the final report is regarding a grant for the municipal court. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the therapeutic courts inter-agency agreement, I A A two five zero eight five, between the Renton Municipal Court and the administrative office of the courts for reimbursement allocation in the amount of two hundred and sixty thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars and sixty cents to support the functions and services of the Renton Municipal Community Court. This too is signed by the, the committee chair and vice chair.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember O'Halloran?
I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee committee report.
Second?
It's been moved by Councilmember O'Halloran, seconded by Councilmember Perez, that the council concur with the Finance Committee report in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries. All right, thank you. We are on to Councilmember Alberton.
Uh, no unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Van?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No unfinished business.
All right, Councilmember Perez?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we are on to legislation and we have none, so we're going to move right on to new business. Council President Prince?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, September sixteenth, at five P M, the committee whole will be meeting in the council chambers. We have one item on the agenda, and that is legislative update. Then at six P M in the conference center, we have our Hispanic Heritage Month reception. No official council action will be taken during this reception, followed by seven P M, the council meeting, also here in council chambers and by video conference. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember McGurven?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to announce the Transportation Aviation Committee will be meeting at two forty-five P M on Monday, September sixteenth, in the council conference room and via video conference. There's six items on the agenda. Number one, lease agreement with Rainier Flight Service LLC. Two, change order number twenty-one to C H E twenty-two, one sixty-three with Pavetta Brothers Construction Incorporated for the Rainier Avenue South Corridor Improvements Phase Four Project. Three, and addendum seven dash twenty-four to L A G ninety-three, four with B H C Incorporated. Four, addendum eight dash twenty-four to L A G ninety-nine, three with Lane Hangar Condominium Owners Association. Fifth, lease agreement with Northwest Sea Plains Incorporated. And finally, our last agenda item is twenty twenty-five to twenty thirty, six-year transportation improvement program. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Let's see here, Councilmember O'Halloran?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on behalf of the committee chair Rivera, I'd like to announce that on September sixteenth, at three forty-five P M, the Public Safety Committee will be meeting in the council conference room and via video conference. We have three items on the agenda. The first is the brief, briefing from the King County Prosecuting Attorney's Office, Juvenile Division. The second is the Renton Regional Fire Authority briefing. And third is emerging issues in public safety. And that is all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Alberton?
I know new business, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Councilmember Van?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few. On September sixteen, twenty twenty-four, Monday at two P M, the Utilities Committee has a meeting. And its location is at the council conference room or video, video conference. We have four items on the agenda. One, agreement with Shannon Wilson Incorporated for the East Valley Road Storm System Improvements Project. Two, agreement between the city of Renton and Sues Creek Water and Sewer District. Three, agreement with Pace Engineers Incorporated for design of the pressure-reducing valve, P R V Station One and P R V Station Sixteen Rehabilitation Project. And fourth, agreement with Skyway Water and Sewer District for transfer water service. And I just want to take this opportunity to thank community for coming to speak. And, you know, last week, over the weekend, we also had, just wanted to share with my colleagues an amazing five K run with Rave Foundation and sponsored by the Rave Foundation in Swedish Providence. So it was a great turnout. Congrats to them. And just going back to our community members and thanking, thank you for coming to speak. So I like to, I know we talked a lot about jurisdiction last time. And it's important is our community is suffering and the impacts it's going to cause in our community, not just the little impacts of homes. So I motion to refer the matter of research of what the city can do in terms of Renton High School expansion to the city administration. And I hope that my colleague will join me in that.
I'm not hearing a second. All right, next up is council member Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, as there is no section, second, I like to.
We cannot discuss it. We can move on.
Yeah, so I have another motion to make, Mr. Mayor. And it is new, new business time, so I wish to use the time that I have, that the people elect me to do the work. I, you know, hearing our community and the constant concern and just in terms of our waterways and our salmon, quite frankly, for me, it's the community health of our community. And I know that we have different opinions here on the council. But I think this approach here, where community is presenting today in terms of potentially acquiring the Lakeside Industries' proposed asphalt plant site is a, is a creative approach. And I motion the matter of research to acquire the Lakeside Industry proposed asphalt plant site to the city administration and hope that my colleagues would join me in that.
Right, not hearing a second. We're going to move on. Next up is Councilmember Perez.
Mr. Mayor? I did mention I have a few new business, if I may.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am very much devastated to hear that one of our commissioners, and of course, many have been bullied and harassed by other colleagues. I think it's extremely important. I know that the city administration, as well as the council, takes safety as a huge concern. And while the city administration might go back and do background checks or whatever the recommendation is, but I am, I motion to refer the matter of background checks and thorough background investigation of commission and board appointments to the city administration for future appointments and build it into our process for safety of our community, commissions, our staff, our community.
I can, I can share with the council that this is something that we're already taking a look at. So no need to refer to the administration because it's already an issue that H R is taking a look at.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
And lastly, I really appreciate you mentioning that because it's important for our commissioners and volunteers and community to be safe in doing their work. Lastly, we've heard the stories over and over, the nightmare that basically North Renton, South Renton have to endure in terms of abandoned property on Morris. I want to make sure that we look at developments and property owners who are really just in absentee, right? So want to make sure if you have an update on that, if not, I can do a motion.
Go ahead, make your motion.
Okay.
I don't know what you're going to move.
Well, I don't, I don't know if you're going to have an update on it because it's been going. But in any case, I think the amendment made by our community member in terms of making sure that we have the codes, ordinance, and enforcement of it is important. And if the city has already began to draft or have yet drafted more stricter, stricter guidelines and enforcement of absentee owners. So I move to refer the matter of research in terms of what we can do to, whether it is an ordinance, whether it is to penalize property owners who are not in, in with, within our codes, maintaining their property to the city administration.
All right, hearing not a second. I'm going to move on. Councilmember Perez, new business?
Thank you, Major. No new business.
All right, we're at the end of the line here. What's the wish of the council?
Move adjourn. Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Prince, seconded by Councilmember Albertson, that we adjourn on big favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. All right, we're adjourned. Thank you.